Thank you.
Well, John, on upcoming projects and the number three projects progress, is there anything for those?
Upcoming projects, there is, they're going to the board, but that's about a five-minute item or less.
Let's do that right now, even before Julie gets here, and she can just miss that.
Sure.
And then we'll officially start the meeting when she gets here.
Okay, so we have several upcoming projects that we plan on bringing to the board, excuse me, this coming, on the eighth, and these are new projects that we're adding to the program sheet. The first two projects on that list are pretty self-explanatory, they're what we deemed as those infrastructure projects. And actually, Julie just joined, so.
Oh, great. Hey, Julie.
Hello, sorry about that.
That's all right. So let's call the meeting to order 4:32. Do you move to approve the agenda, Julie?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'll second it. Do you move to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All right, I'll second that. Any public comment?
We do have one attendee with their hand up. Ilya Rios is here tonight.
Okay, Ms. Rios, we have two minutes for public comment.
Hello?
Yeah, hello?
Hi, I wanted to read a comment that I have. "I'm the mother of a third grader at Emerson, and I'm here to advocate for the entire Emerson community as I am alarmed at the delay in getting information regarding site upgrades as they pertain to COVID safety measures taken by the facilities department and their respective contractors over the summer. During the superintendent's town hall before the school year began, I asked questions about who certified the Emerson site upgrades to ensure that a qualified industrial hygienist had reviewed and tested all of the systems in place to make sure they worked and were the appropriate upgrades, given the unique nature of the Emerson School site. For instance, do the portable air units run sufficient air cycles for a classroom with more than 20 kids in it? How loud are the units altogether in the classroom? Can the teachers hear their masked students? If there are monitors in place to track that the filtration systems are functional and providing accurate measurements of air quality, particulate, and CO2, where is that data located? On August 23rd, the Emerson community learned that the units housing the MIR filters were not functional in the building where our students learn. To note, in order for the MIR filters to work, the system that has been in place must be on. Our teachers and principal reported this to facilities immediately, and repairs happened the following Monday. I am not complaining about the timeframe for a repair here. I'm complaining about the fact that any person who tests air quality would have noted these units in the classrooms were not operational if they were actually testing the MIR filters in these units. This was the first week of school. The students at our school also regularly mentioned how badly the bathrooms smell, and this is not from a lack of cleaning. It is from a lack of mechanical or active ventilation to move air through these spaces. In fact, in some of the bathrooms, leaving the doors propped open to offer some sort of air exchange is apparently a fire hazard. Please help me understand what is going on at Emerson. I'm told Emerson has been given the same upgrades as every other facility within BUSD, but I also understand Emerson's quirks from my time volunteering there pre-pandemic. If facilities hired contractors to guide COVID upgrades, surely those experts ran calculations by classroom and occupancy to determine the right type and quantity of air purifier to install.
Ms. Rios, if you could.
Please tell, I'm almost done. Please tell me what the sound of a CO2 sensor that exceeds 800 parts per million sounds like, so teachers know to move students if the filters are running but not functioning properly. We cannot get our kids vaccinated yet. Why in the world is it so hard to find out whether or not the systems in place are functional and have been tested by a qualified professional? Please help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rios. Okay. We're going to move to the first discussion item, which is the Florence Swimley Little Theater project. And just for the benefit of why I think there's only one person audience, who is Ms. Rios, Emerson is not on our agenda, so we won't be discussing it tonight, but of course, staff can get back to in response to your comments and questions. So, John, I'll turn it over to you. Julie, I had said that I'm hoping, if at all possible, for us to be done by 5:15, but 5:30 at the latest possible. I hope that's okay with you or three. Okay.
Do we need to approve the meeting notes from the last meeting?
You did that already.
Oh, okay.
You moved it. It was very quick.
Oh, that's right. I thought I did the agenda. Thanks.
You also did the minutes.
That's right, I did.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Okay, just for clarity, though, that 30 seconds right there, that's not coming off my time.
No, that's Julie's fault.
Okay.
Sorry, John, I won't say anything more.
This next item is a large item, but I'm going to try to, just knowing how you both appreciate brevity, give you a really high-level overview, and then I'm going to pass it over to our folks over at CAW Architects who are with us, as well as school facility consultants. And what this is, is you may recall that the board had approved the project, one of the next projects already on the Measure G list, to do the Little Theater, the Florence Swimley Little Theater at the Berkeley High School. So due to some recent changes with DSA and OPSC, and where we are on the dollars that we're spending on the classroom wing and the stage box, the Division of State Architect has now informed us that in order to do the Florence Swimley Little Theater, which was originally being done as a voluntary seismic upgrade, just like the stage box and the classroom wing, that we would actually be required to do a mandatory seismic upgrade on the entire house. Keep in mind, the 3,400-seat house is not being touched as part of either of these projects. So they're requiring us to do this. So I'm going to give you a really quick overview what that means. Essentially, if we had to guesstimate, and it really is just a wag at this point, it's not even a ROM, but if we had to guess what it's going to cost to do the house itself, we're probably looking at it about an additional $30 million. Now, school facilities consultants and Marnie and Matt are here to help us with understanding that there is the seismic mitigation program. But in order to do that, we have to approve two contracts that are tentatively on the board for the eighth. The first of which is for CAW. CAW will actually have to do a set of designs showing the seismic work that we would do to then submit, and the Office of Public School Construction would go through those plans and determine what value they have. Then from there, Matt and Marnie would help us work with the Office of Public School Construction, because there's really a trigger in when they value that. And ultimately, it'll come back to either being able to receive up to $22.3 million from the state in seismic mitigation funding, or $11 million. There's really no in-between. So with that, I'm actually going to pass it over to Brent, and he can drive you through the quick presentation to talk about this, and then we can open it up for any questions.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brent McClure with City of the Architects. John, that was a really thorough, actually, your overview was spot on, and I think it's going to make, can I share my screen, Carol? I click on the share screen, and it says I'm.
She'll activate it now for you.
Thanks.
Okay, you should be good, Brent.
Perfect. Okay, I put a few slides together to kind of just summarize the situation, and John pretty much touched on all the slides already, so I'll go through this somewhat quickly. But in essence, here's a plan of the building. And just to highlight, you know, we're kind of tackling this, you know, the building is kind of subdivided into these three zones. There's the classroom wing and stage box, which is under construction in blue. There's the Little Theater, which we've started the schematic design work in, which is in the peach color. And then the main house is the area that's future some fine day that has been, you know, tentatively identified as sort of not part of the project in the scope. Just to give you some highlights here, the Little Theater, you know, it's got some significant deficiencies. You know, number one, there is no ADA accessibility to any portions of the building. There's no accessible seating, paths of travel, restrooms, the dressing rooms and backup house spaces, theatrical support. None of those are able to be accessed by anyone in meetings, sort of, anything with disabilities. The other thing is that, you know, the building has been roughly untouched. So finishes are, you know, worn, and there's been, you know, just some very minor improvements related to fire alarm and whatnot. And then, you know, lastly, sort of theatrical, you know, the rigging is aging, there's outdated production systems and whatnot. And, you know, and this is sort of the workhorse and backbone of the campus, and, you know, the building has been around more or less untouched for 75, going on almost 80 years. You know, as John mentioned, you know, originally, we started this project, we are only required to do seismic upgrades in the areas of work. So when we did the classroom wing and stage box, that area was brought up to current seismic and structural codes, but areas outside what we're touching in a renovation project, we're not required to upgrade those. And recently, in May, DSA has changed their implementation of certain aspects of the code. And what I mean by that is if we, where's the draw tool? Sorry, I'm looking at the Zoom. I guess I don't have it. So in essence, what has been identified is that in our original plan for the Little Theater, we were going to be doing seismic and structural upgrades of that zone only. And then, since the main theater house and lobby was outside the area of work, that area was going to remain untouched. In May, they changed and updated some interpretations that they have as it relates to seismic upgrades to existing buildings. Now, this building, even though it kind of breaks into different components, it is still defined as one single building. And that trigger is basically, is, hold on, let me change here. That trigger that they've identified is that if you, if the cumulative scope of work of your renovation exceeds 50% of the replacement value, which is a debatable term on how that's interpreted, but we've gone back and forth with them on this at this point. If the renovation scope exceeds 50% of a calculated replacement value, then you are required to do a mandatory, like, full seismic upgrade of the entire building. So initially, when we were moving forward with the Little Theater with this recent change in May, their interpretation now is that we would, for the Little Theater to continue to move forward, we would then have to do seismic upgrades within the main house as part of the Little Theater project. So instead of just doing that teal, I'm sorry, the peach-colored zone of the building, we would still proceed with that. However, we would include and add on to that seismic upgrades that are included in the footprint of the house. So the project boundary would, in essence, sort of grow to match this red dashed line. Now, we have done an initial study when, before we even started the classroom wing, as to what are some of the major seismic deficiencies within the house. And there are two sort of main areas of focus. The first is, are the ceilings within the house. And so the photograph on the left with all of the lights, those are plaster ceilings above the 3,000-seat house and balcony. And those ceilings are what we call unbraced. And so they're hanging and supported for vertical loads, and there is little bits of bracing, but there's not sufficient bracing in that if there is a major seismic event, then there could be, there would be issues likely with the ceiling and creating a hazard for, you know, potential occupants. The second area of concern within the house relates to what we call the drum walls. Now, these are the walls that form the circle of the main auditorium. And if you look at the image at the bottom, that is a structural diagram of taking that drum wall and unfurling it, so laying the whole entire 360 degrees flat. And so the areas that are in and around openings, such as the main gallery space as you come into the auditorium or in the balcony levels where there's sort of holes within that structural wall, those would also need to be reinforced. Now, as John mentioned, we've taken a very, very high-level wag at this from a cost standpoint, but I think that those numbers still need to be probably fleshed out in analysis, sort of going forward. So that's kind of, you know, the first component of this. The second component is really, there's a funding program that the state of California has for seismic mitigation projects, which this building would fall under. And the way that the grant money that this project could be eligible for is calculated. It is measured against what we call the replacement value of the building. Now, the OPSC, which is the funding agent at the state, they don't sit there and use like, what's your cost estimate? What does it actually cost to replace this building? But they have these, I'm going to call them kind of averages across the state of California of what they think it takes to build. And it's somewhat arbitrarily low. But the replacement value that they've calculated is $44 million. And so we take 50% of that value to then measure what our grant amounts could be. If we are less than that 50% threshold of what, you know, John was mentioning earlier, the $22.3 million. So if the seismic work, I'm going to go back to this drawing here, of everything, all of the seismic work in all three portions of the building, we're not just talking about the main auditorium, but all three portions of the building. If the seismic-only scope exceeds 50% of the replacement value, so if that scope of that project, and we don't know what that cost is yet, because some of the pieces are unknown, if that exceeds the $22 million and we're over 50% of the replacement value, then the OPSC will grant us and grant the district the full $22 million or half the replacement value of the building. If the value of that is less than the $22 million, then they will only give us 50% of that calculated renovation cost. So if we had a renovation project of all three of those spaces for only the seismic work, not the program improvements or other things, but just the seismic work, and that was, let's say, $20 million, well, then the grant would be 10. So really, if you look at this table at the bottom, what we're kind of saying is the renovation cost is less than 22 million, then there's a range of available funds from the OPSC that can go from anywhere from $0 to $11 million. But once we trigger and pop above the $22 million, we would actually get the $22 million. So if it was $30 million or $40 million or whatever, it would cap out and max at $22 million. So the, I think that the questions that we have and sort of next steps and where we are in this process, because we've been working on the design of the Little Theater, and we've kind of reached this point, and we're kind of, you know, sort of a fork in the road. And I think the fundamental questions that we have, that we would think need to be answered, would be, well, what would the cost of the additional work need to be in the, in the main house? Like, what would be the balance of the other work? And what amount of grant funding could we get? Are we actually going to be able to get the $22 million? Or would we be getting something of that 50% amount, which would be in the 11 or the 10 amount? Now, to do that, what we've proposed, and what John was mentioning was to move forward with, would be to do a study and evaluate this at a, what we call sort of a schematic design level, and do some further evaluation and analysis to better, you know, refine and understand what the seismic scope is going to be, and then also look at the calculations with OPSC as to the value of the work of the overall building to determine if we are, if we think the range of our costs are going to be approximately, you know, $20 to $23 million, where we're right at that threshold, or if we're well above that threshold, and we think we're significantly at like $30 million of that calculated value, then we would be more confident to understand, yes, we think we could get the $22 million from the state. The second component of that, as I was mentioning, was also then understanding what the additional cost of the actual work would be, and we would be able to cost and study that as well.
How much would that, how much is that contract, Brent?
I believe the total proposal that we submitted for the CAW and all of our consultants was just under $100,000.
Yeah, let me jump in. So we're right about $100,000 for CAW and up to $50,000 for school facility consultants. And the reason for that, and why it's so.
Can you unshare your screen, Brent?
Oh, sorry.
Why it's so important to have them in here is the Office of Public School Construction, when they review CAW's schematic design, they're going to go to something called Sierra West to cost it out. And Sierra West is very, very low in what it values this work at. Matt is really, Matt Petler, who's on the call here, is really considered to be the expert in California with dealing with the Office of Public School Construction, as is Marnie, specifically around seismic mitigation funding. So what we're able to do then is Matt's able to go in and sort of arm wrestle with the Office of Public School Construction and really challenge what they're finding and work with us. So the reason that their scope is up to, they have two prices in their contract. The first price is like, I don't remember the split, I apologize, but it's to sort of get the ball rolling and help us do all the work. Then the second price, if we have to get into that argumentative phase, if you will, with OPSC, that triggers that, and that's where Matt and his team work on it. I think the important thing to think about is if we open up, if we begin to go down this road, right? Which I think we have to, just from a risk perspective, but that's not my decision to make. But if we begin to go down this road, where this road is going to lead us is in the best-case scenario, we're still going to be potentially spending about $8 million out of the bond that we hadn't planned on. Plus, because of all of the code changes, because we see code changes every few years, and because of what's happening with construction costs as it is, we're seeing about an additional $7 million tracking right now in schematic design for the Little Theater. So what that means is if we go down this road and we maximize the state funding, we're still going to potentially be spending about $15 million out of the bond that we hadn't initially planned on spending. So I paint that big picture, just so you have an idea of what this decision means today.
Fifteen on top of the eight, or inclusive of the eight?
Inclusive. No, no, inclusive. From the high school's perspective, from a programmatic perspective, the Little Theater is more used than the large theater, which is why it was being done after the classroom wing. And then, the large theater, the house, while it is rarely used, we do have some risk there. We even investigated trying to deal with some of this risk in the current project, looking at bracing the ceiling and whatnot, but it just didn't fit into the budget. So I give you that, just, I really want you guys to have the big picture in making this decision, because this decision may trigger many others.
So can I?
Go ahead, dear.
I'm sorry, this, great presentation, tons of information, so I apologize, I want to step back a little bit. This is, is there the dynamic that if DSA already approves a project, they can change in the middle of it? These kinds of criteria, because we're, I'm a little confused on how we, like, are moving down this path, and then it takes a sharp, huge financial turn if we've already, did we not have DSA approval for the Little Theater?
No, so the board only approved the Little Theater a few months ago as being, well, maybe, probably close to a year ago now. And we began working on schematic design after we got through contracting. And during that schematic design is when DSA said, hey, look, we've changed the rules. We haven't even submitted it. The project isn't fully drawn yet. But because of these changes, you're now going to have to do the entire building.
And the Little Theater was seen as something different from the A Building. It's a separate project in that framework?
Yeah, it's in the same building, but we look at it as three separate buildings sometimes. And because the A Building project only includes the classroom wing and the stage box, it doesn't give an automatic approval for the Little Theater. The Little Theater is a standalone project as the house would be. That's a great question, it really is, and it's incredibly frustrating when we see these changes or we see changes to code iterations as we're in design, but the.
Yeah, I mean, we made the intentional decision not to do the bowl.
Right.
The house, knowing that there could be money, but we didn't know if there'd be money. So that, I mean, we kind of vetted that through, and it sounds like we're now kind of, so I'm not recommending this.
And the unfortunate part, let me, real quick, so you know, because I want to be clear, we, because you just said, you guys had made the decision not to do the house. This project, Julie, is really just about seismic mitigation work on the house.
Yeah.
Now, any of the finishes that would have to be disturbed to do the seismic work would be replaced, but what this does not include is a modernization of the house. So it's not like the classroom wing or the.
I understand.
Yeah, we get it, we understand.
So let me ask one more question, and I'm not recommending that we do this, but is one of the options not to do the Little Theater?
It is.
Right, I mean, when you say the decision, isn't the decision we have right now to make, do we spend $150,000 to kind of study, you know, how much this all will cost us? Or do we scrap the whole thing?
Yeah, the decision is just that you can spend 150 to, or recommend to the board to spend 150 to do the studies, for Brent and his team to do the studies, for Marnie and Matt to actually work with OPSC to see what will qualify for. And then at that point in time, we can actually, we'll continue the design on the Little Theater, because that's, we're already in that, right? And at that point in time, we'll come back to subcommittee. Once we have an idea of where it's going to go with OPSC, we can present back to subcommittee what the findings are, and then from there, the subcommittee can make the recommendation to the board if we move forward. I only talked about the triggers of what this can bring, so we can think about it just from that 50,000-foot view.
One question I had was, if we, is what they're requiring us to do in the bowl, is it, is it anything that then, if we somehow decided, if we found the money or we decided to do the actual modernization of the bowl, we would have wanted to do anyway? Or would that, or would we have to then undo that and do something else? You know what I mean?
No, it's definitely relevant to what we've wanted to do. You know, as Brent pointed out, the two biggest concerns in the bowl right now, one are all of the openings on the drum wall. The way that the report reads, the openings are quite problematic. And two, it's the ceiling. And like I said, we actually looked to see if we could try to squeeze the ceiling into this project, and we couldn't. The ceiling is braced from a direct drop, but if it were to bounce in the event of a large seismic incident, we could have three inches of plaster raining down.
Yeah, yeah. What, if we did, is it too early to have thought about what we would not be funding out of the bond funds if we spent this additional money? Have you put any thought into that, or is that just premature?
We have. We've put a lot of thought into that, and we're working on it. I actually think we may have already found a way to save about $10 million in the bond, but we're still trying to flesh that out. It's so early. And right now, what we're seeing happening with costs from everything, from labor to materials, it's really hard to say.
Yeah. Julie, what are you, are you inclined to proceed with the 150 and see what you are?
Yeah, I don't think we have a choice.
Okay, it would be rash to like scrap the whole thing at this point.
It would.
Yeah, is that how you feel?
I'll move it.
Okay, but John, you agree with that, I assume?
I do.
All right, I'll second that. So that means sending to the board these contracts for next week?
Yep, and they are agendized already, so thank you.
Okay.
Great, well, CAW and School Facility Consultant, thank you guys so much for joining today.
Yeah, thanks a lot. That was, I mean, yeah, it was all helpful.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's a huge bummer. Upcoming projects, John?
So upcoming projects, it looks like the bid planning sheet was attached, which I can run you through. But what I did want to talk about is there are, on the Measure G program sheet going to the board, on the eighth, there are five new projects that are going to the board just to basically authorize the projects. These were always in the planning of the bond. These projects include the infrastructure upgrades and improvements that are necessary and needed at both Willard and BTEC. And they also include the solar projects at Jefferson, Willard, and MLK. Now, why we're starting with these particular schools is based upon infrastructure needs. It's based upon lifespan, and then it's also based upon like it, Sylvia Mendez, great example, right? So Sylvia Mendez, we know that there's solar scheduled for that, but we know that we're going to do a full modernization. So we have no intention of putting the solar on first. So to do them in the order that we have here really makes a lot of, it makes sense. Additionally, Van Pelt has been working really hard on our cash flow analysis, because one of the key components that we have to remember is that we can only issue so much money in bonds every few years to keep the tax rate at or below the promised rate to the community per 100,000. So that's where we're starting with the Willard infrastructure improvements at 3.2 million, the BTEC infrastructure improvements at 1.2, Jefferson Solar at 3 million, Willard Solar at 3.3 million, and King Middle School actually at just under a million. And that's on the board for the A.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you reading that off of the bid planning sheet?
No, I, I.
Oh, I'm like, I'm not seeing that.
Reason, only the bid planning sheet got attached and I, I can't speak the why out of them. I made a mistake, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, but the bid planning sheet, what this is, is just to give you a very high level overview. And we wanted to include this because really, facilities is in a very heavy year of planning right now. So I think it's really easy for community members or even board members to think, what are they doing at facilities? We're not seeing a lot of construction going on except for the A Building, right? Well, we're doing a lot. We're, we're working on the GeoTacs, we're working on the HazMats, we've finished up the painting project. We're also working on the CEQA document that's gonna be required, the environmental impact report for the parking lot. We've got, we've been hiring architects for future projects and on the board on Wednesday is the architect for Sylvia Mendez. We're doing the planning around Longfellow. And then we're also doing, we're getting ready to release another R F P for actually a bridging architect for the parking structure with the tennis courts. So there's a lot going on. We wanted to, I think, looking at this now, I think we can actually give this to you in a more condensed format next time. But we just wanted to have for, for the subcommittee to understand what's going on behind the scenes.
Okay. You're muted.
We thought you were just hanging around.
Yeah, yeah, it's good to know you're actually working.
Yeah, between, yeah, yes. Sorry, I'm not gonna say anything else.
Okay, what, what else? Are we, so now are we on to, did the change, change order logs?
Yeah, the change order log, we've just, we, we've begun to submit this now for, to you guys for the last few meetings as well as our C B O C, because I think it's important that we're transparent of where we are on everything. Nothing has really changed. The only exception that I would say is the one that we knew was always gonna be a little bit tricky would be Rosa Parks. When I came on, Rosa Parks was an uncertified project from when it was originally built. And unfortunately, it's a little bit of Pandora's box in the sense of everything that we open, we find something else broken. On the, the, particularly the elliptical canopy, the kindergarten canopy, and then the main entry, we're finding a lot of welds that are failing, a lot of rust, things like that. So we, we'll authorize work, but we can't say, okay, it's gonna be this much more, period. We have to authorize them to remove all the glazing, then they have to sand it, we have to bring in a testing lab and so on, it's over. So that's sort of what's happening over at Rosa Parks. But other than that, there's not a lot going on. The, the painting project, and I, I bring this up because I think we were all shocked originally at the wag for the ROM rather. And that ROM was based on the, the industry pricing. But we actually came in and I don't see it on here, but I wanna say something like forty percent under budget or thirty percent on the budget. Chris, do you recall what that one was?
I don't have to tell him that. I'm trying to bring it up right now myself.
It's okay, that's right.
Okay, that's all right. Yeah. So we authorized a million dollars on that painting project and I think we came in at like five, four hundred.
Which one was that?
For building M.
Oh.
At the high school. And that was where we had some spalling concrete due to a water stop failure. So we had to fix that and then paint the entire building with an Alast America paint.
And John, the A Building construction is going well and, and everything's on track?
It is, yeah. We, you know, right now, we're showing, I think we're two days behind on the schedule. But we've already started, and even though we're more than a year away from opening, we've already begun conversations with the contractor of, we want them to look for ways to escalate the project without necessarily escalating the price. And what that means is, right now, it's scheduled to be completed in the middle of September of twenty-two. I want it done for the opening of school because the impact that'll have is huge. And if we have to pay some escalation, we understand it, we don't want to. And the contractor, actually, it's in their best interest, just from a cost and overhead perspective, to get out of there sooner and to really just be able to shine in the spotlight of the U S D. So they're working and doing everything they can to try to find some creative ways to escalate that by a month so that we could have a grand opening with the opening of school, hopefully outside of the COVID environment at that point.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. Great. Carol, do we, do we have to talk about meetings for the remainder of the year?
No, those are just the final dates and for the public to have access to them.
Oh, okay. Anything else then?
Well, you know, you, you said five fifteen, which gives me about nine minutes to pontificate, if that's okay, Ty.
Yeah, you're welcome. Pontificating is not on the agenda.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave, but please feel free to go ahead. Thank you all. Thanks, Carol.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate it. Take care.
Have a great evening.